This is the Wapaka area school district board of education meeting.
Okay, we'll get started. First item would be President's comments. We do not have it under the upcoming dates, so I will remind everyone that we still have some of our Christmas concerts coming up. December 17th, Monday, one and five for the WLC. Nine and one on December 18th. And I did not write down, I'm sorry, the one here at the high school, it's the twenty...
Next Sunday, I think.
Sunday, okay. So, just as a reminder, they always do a great job. Also, we do have in our upcoming dates the WASB state convention. I'm not sure if everybody gets all of the emails from the WASB, but they did also announce a new in 2019 virtual attendee access, so if someone was not able to make it or wanted to avoid the time and traffic and everything else. They don't have all the sessions, but they do have some that they've deemed to be some of the stronger breakout sessions, so you might want to review that email. Certainly, there's an expense involved with the convention, so that's, I think, where they're being smart in offering, and is a potential correction. So with that, we'll go to the pledge, and I am going to ask Mr. ...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order, but the record reflects that all members of the board are in attendance. Move on to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? To move? Motion? Motion and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, is there anyone that wishes to make public comments? You're all here in a different capacity, and you'll be making another comment at another, a little bit later on, okay. Next item on the agenda would be the November 13th regular board meeting minutes, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Motion? And a second?
I thought you were asking for a second.
No. Any discussion, questions, corrections? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much, and moving to communications, Dr. Neam.
Not much by way of district administrators' report tonight, I just wanted to take this opportunity to wish everyone a happy and safe holiday season. That concludes my report.
Wow, okay.
That was fast.
We're ahead of schedule. Moves aside to section eight, which would be the school board report on meetings attended or school visits. Does anybody have any to report to this evening?
I did. I went to the middle school, because I was supposed to go to the middle school last month, and I went to the wrong school. So I went to the middle school today. And had a lovely visit, visited five different classrooms. There are so many new teachers there that I didn't recognize. And went to several other classrooms, had a really nice conversation with Ms. Watrovich. She didn't have students in her class, so we had a really good talk about how things were going. And visited Mr. Harms' class, and they were learning about the Plinkett Indians and Native Americans in Alaska, so we shed some light on that. Joel Streton, Joel Streton.
Comfort.
Comfort. Yeah, Joel Comfort. Awesome, and they were studying rocks, and I was impressed with what the kids knew there. Then I went to Mrs. Snyder's English class, and that was quite the class. They had a lot of, she introduced me to the class, and they had a lot of questions for me, which was very interesting, about why they need to learn English, or science, or any of it. So we had quite a discussion about the importance of all of it, and why we might not think now what's important. They're gonna wanna know how to write and read, and figure out where countries are in geography when they get older, or even now. So it was a really good conversation, and I asked them what they liked about school, and they said a lot of things. Of course, their favorite subjects are recess, although they don't even have recess, do they? Oh, they do? Recession and free time. But anyway, it was very enlightening, and mine had close off to all middle school teachers and principals and administration, because I think you all have payoffs. But I heard wonderful things about you and what's going on. So it was a great visit.
Can I just let you share with them that recess was your favorite time, too?
No, they never asked me, actually. I might have said that.
I made a visit to the Wapaka Learning Center, and I was able to visit with half a dozen teachers, but four of them, we got into a longer conversation, and every one of them said that they were really happy to see the board there, that it's unusual for them to see it, somebody there and to talk to. And yeah, it was neat. And by the way, I visited with Mrs. Comfort.
Oh, well, there you go.
It was very, very good meeting.
Well, I'm gonna use my time for a school visit, chance to talk about a few things that have gone on that I became aware of here in this building primarily, because I've been in the building a lot this week, the last couple of days. First of all, Monica Reeves took four students to UW Stevens Point Writing Workshop, and all four of them received commendation awards, which was pretty unusual since we did quite well for the school in terms of the overall, where some schools send lots of people and didn't win any of the awards. We sent four, and all four won awards. So kudos to those students and to her for taking them. And also, I just want to make a slight change on our agenda, I didn't wanna say anything then, but it says on our agenda coming up that Jay Dix is gonna be the all-school play director. Jay Dix is actually working with Monica, that kinda gives the impression Monica's not. Monica is the director, and there's another spot for her to be their assistant. I just came from the audition, they've been auditioning the last two days, and I'm plugging their play, The Thirty-Nine Steps, which is kind of a comedic murder mystery, kinda zany, crazy, which is coming up in February. And they've been doing a lot of work getting the characters in place, so that I just wanted to announce. And lastly, I don't know that it was on the agenda, but I'm taking the moment to say so. As most of you know, the community garden, which used to be on this campus of the high school, has moved out to the chain school, and it's being worked there, and it's really changing focus from a community garden to a school garden. And I think it probably will change its name as well over time. But a new well was put in for that garden out there, it just been placed this last week, so that's good, the ground has been worked up, there's been quite a bit of excitement about getting some maneuver for that, Jen's gonna help in that regard. And hopefully, that plot of ground will be very useful for the program for education and the kids out at the chain school coming up, and the charter school in the spring. So things are moving in the right direction, so that's my report.
May I just make a quick response to the community garden? There is some interest in assessing a community garden that would not be the school district's responsibility, it would definitely be on the grounds. There might, we know there's a need there.
Yes.
And so...
Yes, and you know, and...
You and I have talked about that, too.
To that end, I got a call, I've had a call from a couple of different outlets that have wondered what's gonna happen in terms of, for those of you who don't know, the community garden produced about five tons, which is 10,000 pounds of food out here for the last few seasons, and we've given all of that away. Those outlets, food pantries and other such organizations, WIC programs, Bread Basket, so forth, you know, they, we aren't going to do that next year, because we just won't have the facility to do that. So they're concerned about that. But to that end, I got a call this week, and one of the people on our board is meeting with Theta Care, and Theta Care is looking into a piece of property over at the, near the hospital to do some development along the same lines for usage for theirs and for others. So maybe some others of people will pick up some of that slack, and hopefully, the community will still get some of the goods out of that.
I have a quick question, Steve. We both went to the CEC, the Chain Exploration Center project presentation night, was that?
It was two nights, we went awesome.
Yes.
Did you go?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, you did, yes. I think four of us were there. It was two nights after our meeting?
Last work.
Yeah, because we had gotten invited that day, and then it was that Thursday night. It was awesome.
It was, it's almost overwhelming, there are so many presentations going on during the evening, very interesting, very, they were varied, I would say highly varied, and I really love that the other students attend and are so supportive of the students who are presenting and are already primed, I mean, have been thoughtful about asking questions of the other students, it's very nice.
I was so impressed with the power points that they did, that students that age can put together a really good power point. Gotta take some lessons there from them. But it was really impressive to see their, and to see the excitement of parents. I talked to a parent last week of one of the students at the CEC, and asked him how it was going. And he said, you know, he was a little nervous at first, because he didn't know how his son would do. He said he absolutely cannot believe the excitement that his son has about school now. So it was really a very positive, very positive report, and I think it's a wonderful thing.
And for these projects, I think each of the students had to have what they call a live source, they have to contact someone to sit down and talk with them, either by phone or in person, help address questions that they have about topics and get ideas. So they're learning some social skills as well, presumably, in addition to having to present in front of a large group.
It was awesome.
That was my question. I will say also, I've been attending the Wisconsin Resource Center for Charter Schools workshops, and we as authorizers do have some benchmarks, isn't the right word, we have some things that we have to develop a plan for, how we're going to complete them, and I'll work on getting something more coherent together so that we can come up with that in the near future.
My school visit was at our, today, watching the second, third graders play basketball in the gym, after-school basketball. I tell you, some of those little kids could beat me in a game of basketball, and I'm not a good basketball player, but still, I mean, little kids, shooting three-pointers, very impressive. There was a lot of dribbling, but I wasn't gonna point it out to the ref.
Very, very good, I, as many pointed out, I also was at the project night at the charter school, and I can only echo what you said, there was a lot of excitement, a lot of support from the other students. I did have the opportunity to talk to one of the parents, and they too said that their child has come out of their shell, and is doing very, very well, and they, she believes it's in part due to the way that the learning environment is structured, so a lot of positives. Okay, well, then to upcoming meetings, some other activities, Dr. Neam?
December 12th, tomorrow afternoon, there will be a special board meeting here at 1:00 PM. December 21st, that is the deadline for non-candidacy. January 2nd is the deadline for declaration of candidacy. January 8th will be our next regularly scheduled board meeting here at 5:15 PM. January 9th, we will have a student services meeting here at 1:00 PM, and then, as President Johnson mentioned earlier, the WASB state convention is January 23rd through the 25th.
That brings us to the WASB resolutions. Mr. Hackett has already commented on those, but who would like to take these?
Well, generally speaking, the board delegate, which I believe is you, Pat? And hopefully, you've received your packet of resolutions.
I have a packet that just came in the mail two days ago, which I have not opened yet.
So the standard protocol is usually that the administration and the board representative, which in this case is Mr. Fair, review the resolutions and determine which ones Pat will vote thumbs up or thumbs down as he represents the school district of Wapaka.
Right, and as happened in the past, if anybody has, if you look them over, if you have any strong feelings on them one way or the other, as most of you could probably guess, I'm pretty much in agreement with most of the assembly that's there. I think last year, if I recall, there were only two proposals out of whatever number there was, that had much discussion or dissension, most everything was pretty much pro forma. So, and I, I'm saying that only because, generally speaking, I'm pretty much go along with most of the things that are presented by our WASB board. But if you have anything, let me know, because I'll be there for the delegate assembly.
Thank you. Next item, item D, under section eight, would be the appointment of a deputy court for election purposes.
I think the board's standard protocol is to identify your board secretary, Harold Meyer-McRuskin, as the deputy court.
And I would make that in the form of a motion if we need it.
Actually, we don't need it, it's an appointment, so if the board would like to vote, we certainly do. If you're all you're willing to accept that appointment? I said with section three. Okay, to the administrator section?
We just have one item for the board's consideration this evening, we have a resolution, and this resolution is designed to strengthen our grant application for FabLab. FabLab is short for Fabrication Laboratory, and although you might think of that being particularly of the metals origin or discipline, FabLab can really cover all of those areas of CTE, woods, agriculture, foods, and certainly metals. So the high school administration and some of our staff members have been working alongside Mr. Fair, and have been developing our application, and I'm happy to report that we have commitment from a number of community members, I'll run through the list very quickly, that provides the matching grant requirement of $25,000. So from the Wapaka Chamber, we have a commitment of $5,000, from the Anthony Foundation, $5,000, Farmer State Bank, $5,000, Wes Claygas, $500, Cubic Design, $5,000, and Wapaka Foundry, $4,500. So that brings us to the $25,000 mark, and we're hopeful that our grant application will be successful in securing the other $25,000. So, Pat, did I miss anything?
Well, the only thing that we have to do tonight as a board, we have to pass this resolution, when I say we've talked about the board, we have to pass this resolution, which is part of the grant application. They would like to know that the application is in conjunction with the board's wishes to use the grant monies, assuming we would get it, $50,000, $25,000, which is local, and $25,000, which would come from the WEDC, to that end. So tonight, the resolution, we had to form this resolution and get it in today's meeting, because the grant application has to be sent out no later than Thursday of this week. So Jen has been working to put it all together and hopefully send it out tomorrow, and so we need to pass the resolution, and then sign off on it, so to speak, so that they know that we have taken action. This is a matching grant, right? So WEDC is giving away up to $25,000, so we're asking for the maximum, because we have $25,000 local dollars to back it up, and then that money will be, we'll find out if we win the grant by February of this month, of this year, I'm sorry, it would actually be next year, '19, but that's only a couple of months from now. And the reason why it's important is because if we should gain the money from the grant, then we can go ahead with purchases, and we can go ahead with, we being the school can, not me, but the administration and the staff can move things along. That's why we called down, Jen and I called down, to find out if we were to secure the money, how soon would it come? Wouldn't do as much good next year if it didn't come for a year, you know, kinda thing. And we were concerned about the budget and everything else, but it's gonna, we're gonna find out right away in February. So then the purchases can be made this spring, and hopefully, next fall, there will be some things in place. So that was the idea.
Two quick things, one, I'm very appreciative of the community members who have come forward to support this, and it's so nice to have this commitment in advance of the application.
Right.
And also, though, I wondered about your choice of the word exploration in the second to last, whereas supports exploration of a FabLab, as opposed to saying implementation, or...
And I can speak to that word, because I specifically placed that word in there. I didn't want to commit the board nor the district to a FabLab in the event it was cost prohibitive. So if we get the grant dollars and everything falls into alignment, and the board gives it a thumbs up, then we can certainly move forward.
Okay.
The $50,000, let me take a motion before we have more discussion, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
There's a motion, and a second?
Second.
A quick motion and a second. As a part of discussion, with the $50,000, there is a listing of a number of pieces of equipment that would go into the FabLab. Does the $50,000 cover all those items that were listed? 3D printers, for example, are quite expensive.
Yes.
It does, okay. Are there additional pieces of equipment that would be needed to have a functioning FabLab?
I don't know at this time, because they just needed an idea of what we want. We don't have to write down exact serial number, what the brand is and how much money. That's where, you know, I'm gonna lean on Steve to, you know, get the best product that's easy to use, so...
Well, I think, in answer to your question, it's still in process, we don't know what the ultimate cost could be or will be to have a full fabrication on it.
And I mean, this isn't enough money for a whole one, I mean, but it's a good head start. It's something that, you know, I'm hoping all departments can use.
Yeah, one of the big concerns is the integration of a FabLab with the different areas of the school, other than just the, you know, the industrial arts area, and they, and there are a lot of areas that can use a FabLab, and that's where, when the staff is in place to start doing some brainstorming, they'll figure out how to do all of that. But it's a little bit like putting the cart before the horse, if we don't have the money to move forward, we, of course, aren't quite sure what we're going to do until we know how much money, in this case, we didn't know quite, you know, how much we were gonna get back from our community to ask for. So the $50,000 is all for capital equipment, basically. I mean, we have a building, and we have a facility, and we have some staff that are we're gonna, gonna work in that area, so it's gonna be all, all designed for capital materials. When we, when I talked to the gentleman in Madison, who is part of the WEDC grant, I told him, as, I said, you know, we don't have a FabLab as, at the moment, we basically have kind of traditional industrial arts classrooms. And he said, well, you're, you're about one out of about 300 high schools that are in the same situation, and that's exactly what the grant is for, to try to get a kickstart, to start changing over, to make it something a little bit more modern, if you will. So he said, you don't have to, because I said to him, do we need to stress where we are right now? He said, no, I can tell you where you probably are right now, because that's where most schools are. The whole concept here is to get people moving in a more industrialized, modern direction. So the fact that we don't quite know how we're gonna, all this is gonna fall together is pretty common. That's, sorry, so you're gonna have to figure that all out as you go along. It was like, okay, so that's why we put the grant together with that idea in mind.
So there would be more community outreach than there has been?
Well, there's a great number of people that Jen and her group, the, and Julie have already have a lot of business connections, and they've been meeting with regularly, and they have been sort of pushing the idea as well, that we need to upgrade. So I suspect we'll get lots of community input, how to use things, we'll have people in the community who know how some of this material is being used.
I was thinking more for funds than I was about...
As time goes on, I think so. I think the people who are on this list, as Sandy just alluded to, are, you know, are great community support, that's great. I think as time goes on, we may have to ask them over time to continue to support, and we've, according to what Jen has said and with the business, they're willing to do a lot of support in that regard, because they know what, how important it is to turn out some graduates who are good with robotics, and good with, you know, laser cutters, and good with 3D printers. There, I think we'll, we'll have plenty of support in our community as time goes on.
Do we have a motion on the floor with a second, any other discussion? There being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Moving on to the line of student achievement.
Mr. Neam, can you just refresh your presentation, too?
Sure.
So, remember last month I was here and we talked about professional development and our five-star district and the vision of committed excellence in education? This month, I'm gonna talk about kind of the same lines, but instead of talking about professional development, we're gonna talk about the outcomes of that professional development in terms of what have our students have been achieving or doing in the last school year. So that's what we have here in front of you today. As you know, the school report cards, the state report cards came out recently as well, skipping ahead of myself here, I guess. So I just want to remind us of our high reliability, multi-tier system of support visual. This is our roadmap for us in achieving our vision of becoming a district of excellence in education. So we utilize this in terms of how are we going to do the work that we need to get done day to day, to continue to ensure that our students are achieving at a high level. And the student achievement is impacted by all these areas, whether you're talking about guaranteed and viable curriculum, you're talking about relationships, you're talking about commitment, it's not just about a test score, I mean, there's so many other factors that go into providing a solid education for our students. However, I mean, the state does give us a score, right, on how well our students are doing academically, and there's all sorts of ways you can cut up a state report card, whether you agree or disagree with its components, but the bottom line is, for the second year in a row as a district, we've been rated as an exceeding expectations school district. So that goes to all the hard work that our staff has been doing, K-12. I just threw up there the last three years of data as far as state report cards go, to show you, we're going in the right direction, our trajectory is absolutely headed in the right direction. I didn't break it down school by school, but I can certainly tell you, again, the schools over the last three years have seen significant gains as well, and so, again, heading in the right direction. Another data point to reemphasize this point, is that when you compare us to the other 34 schools in CISA V, how are we doing? Well, you can see, three years ago, we were 27th out of the 34, last year, we made a huge jump, and the year before that ranked first, this year ranked second out of those 34. Any questions with any of that information, first? So like I said before, beyond the data, because the test scores are important, but what are we doing really to make sure that our students are learning? And that's where we really gotta talk about, again, what are those structures within that first visual that I shared with you, the multi-tier system of support? And that's kind of the next couple of slides, kinda highlight a few of the things that we're doing. Safety and security, our students have got... Safety and security, our students have gotta feel safe when they come to school. Some of the things that we've been doing, we'll pack away, continues to be strong K-12. The safety grants, we've heard little bits about here and there. Gayville, we've talked about that and that internet security. Best screeners, a K-5 mental health screener that's been in use for the last couple of years. All those things, again, help us paint that picture of safety and security for our students and staff. We gotta make sure we're engaging students beyond just the reading, writing, arithmetic of traditions of schools. So whether that's talking about the student council opportunities that our students have to participate in to develop those social skills. Look at what they're doing out at the charter school, for example, which you had mentioned earlier. The Wapaka Works Center, providing that connection between real life, authentic, what are, what are people doing in our community as far as employment and careers go, bringing them in. Youth options, VR field trips, the maker spaces, all sorts of examples of extracurricular things that are related specifically to those academic areas. Students and family supports, I mean, think about the work that our social workers and counselors do. Think about the community support, which you talked about a little bit before, the project backpack. Those are all great things that provide our students with an opportunity to, to excel academically. Some other things, co-curricular activities, we have 88 of them in our district. You know, a couple of months ago, we talked about the Authors and Actors Festival, right? 30 participants. That's pretty amazing. We talked about the middle school co-ed soccer program, 51 participants this year. That's great stuff. Again, we continue to provide opportunities. We hear what our students and our communities asking for, work together to find a solution, and our kids become more involved. The students who are more involved do better academically, we know that. Student economic supports, what do I need time? You know, it's more common, the middle school and elementary school, for getting those students that support whatever classes they need. Here at the high school, the Common Success Center, so that they can utilize that support during study hall or during lunch period. Again, continuing to increase our student achievement levels. Earlier this Wednesday, provide our teachers a time to collaborate. We're done with isolationism and people working by themselves to get better student results. We've gotta be collaborative, we've gotta be working together to make sure that our curriculum is aligned, guaranteed and viable curriculum. We gotta work together on our assessments to make sure they're of high quality. Continue to provide high-quality professional development for our staff. Last month, again, we talked about the Wapaka First Institute. Earlier this month, we had support from outside literacy coaches, working with our English teachers K-8 across the district. Today and on Friday, we'll be working with Eric Larson from CISA VI to review some of our high school pre-ACT assessment data and some of our data trends. So again, we continue to look to provide opportunities for our staff and what their needs are so that they can continue to improve student learning. Relocation of, reallocation of staff. This year, for the first time, we have interventionists at the high school. We work with students who are two or more grade levels behind in the area of math and English language arts. That's huge because we have students who are behind. We have interventionists, one full-time of English and one full-time of math at the middle school. We have more interventionists at the elementary school. But again, that reallocation, that commitment of staffing dollars is really, really important. A shift in leading data indicators. So, you know, the state report cards are good, the how well our students do on the ACT, the Ford exam, all that information is really good, but it's a one-time assessment. And so we need to look at what other assessments do we have, whether it's internally or externally, that would provide us data on, are we doing the right things? Is our trajectory heading the right direction? So that's where we implemented the Out Ready Assessment this year, the ACT Aspire interim assessment, and again, we did the pre-ACT for our juniors. And we're gonna continue doing that. And, and part of that is really working to align our classroom activities and assessments with these larger-scale assessments that are state mandated, so to speak. So that we have data that can better predict for us and help our teachers say, yeah, our curriculum is on the right path, our assessments that we're doing in the classroom are on the right path. Because we're, we're gonna be able to predict how well our students are gonna do on those bigger assessment pieces. I'm gonna turn it over here to our multi-tier system of support coaches, another reallocation of resources, and just have them kind of talk about what they've done so far this year. And I asked them to be very brief, so I apologize.
Yeah.
I gave them some directions on, on being brief.
Very brief.
But again, here's another example of allocation of resources and support teachers in any one of those areas.
Certainly don't want to override them, but take whatever time you'd like.
We'll still try to be brief. So hi, my name is Wendy Vandenbush. I'm one of the MTSS coaches, I'm also the district reading specialist.
I'm Trisha Nebala, one of the MTSS coaches.
And I'm Tricia Doan.
Yeah, Trisha and Trisha, I know you.
Yes. So I just, first off, I wanted to thank you for just allowing us to express some of the really awesome things that your staff and students are doing in this district. And even though I like the numbers as well, we use it, we get, we are lucky to get kind of like a little bit more of that bird's eye view because we are in all schools. We're working with a lot of different staff at all grade levels. So we're really excited to just share some of this information with you that is just what's going on in our district. So I remember last spring, I talked to you a little bit about, I showed you some numbers about, with the writing units of study that we started implementing. Last year was the first year of the K through 8 implementation. And the teachers, the way we ruled that out is that the staff was asked to complete at least one and some, some people, two or some, up to two units, right?
Yes.
And so they took that on and they completed, I, I, the, the data that I kind of, or the, the information I'm kind of looking at is the narrative unit, which is the very first. The, all the units, they, they do all different types of writing. The narrative unit last year was completed in eight to 12 weeks. The recommendation is that, that those units are each completed in four to six weeks. So we knew it was gonna take a little bit longer and that was acceptable. So most teachers completed one to two units. This year, with now the expectation being all four units implemented throughout the year, so far, the student, or the teachers have completed their first unit in approximately six weeks, which is awesome. And they, they have learned so much and are really excited about what they're seeing with students. And so the challenge, our challenge this year, their challenge this year, and we know it's gonna be not easy, is to complete all the units of study. And that is a tight schedule. We have a pacing calendar for them that we're trying to keep them on. And with some, of course, with some...
Flexibility.
Flexibility, yep. But they're really doing well. So they've all completed that, that first unit and now they're already into that second unit. And so then also, I wanted to let you know that one of the things that we've, we've seen is just, one of the biggest differences is kids who are really excited to write. I mean, kids who write one or two sentences at the very beginning of the year, little ones, are writing full pages and they want to write and they ask their teachers, when can we write? Almost every day, so that's really awesome. And then the other thing that I've seen is, or we've seen, is just that teachers are just able, because of the time that's been built in, teachers are able to have frequent, deep conversations about not only student writing, but all different areas of their content or the teaching that they do and their grade level. And they, I, I, I've just heard many, many people say that that is, that time is very valuable and they have seen huge differences for, for their classrooms and their kids and just their, their group, their teams. So that's really exciting. And so just the, the thing that we hope for this is that a consistent system, K through 8, is gonna translate to even better achievement scores for all students. But more importantly, that we have young people, as they move up, as they get into the ninth, 12th grades, that they're, they just have any door open to them as they graduate. And we hope that this, this, the units of study will propel that for them, so. Sorry, that was longer than one minute.
We were told two to three minutes, so I did this very quick. So my, we each chose kind of a different sort of topical area. So for me, I almost have to kind of read through kind of like, going off of Wendy a little bit. But, so we're lucky enough, we see things you don't get to see, I know that. Like the transformations that I see, like the impact that the writing units of study really has done. We see that on first, first basis and, and I see it every day. These are some of the things. Teachers, teachers themselves have become better writers because of this system and, and the process. You could ask some of those teachers, please, because they, they have become much better teachers in writing, most of them. The students have become better writers, I see that every day. The consistent, there's things that are so important. The consistent scoring that we have is a K-A consistently and it's done with norming. And those norming conversations are really rich and really deep, very important. The other part is it's a framework, and the framework is a workshop model. And that workshop model just allows for not only the writing to take place, but the conferencing, it's that conferring with those kids. And everybody's on the same page where we have rubrics, we know where we are, where we're headed, where to go, where to move. And that's what's gonna drive those scores and should, should drive it. But the other beauty of this is for a lot of the teachers who are seeing how good it is and how great it's working, now we have a lot of teachers who are now going, okay, now we wanna try, can we try the reading units of study? Because there's reading and writing and they pair it together beautifully and they bridge. So we have teachers coming to us now going, can we pilot up? Can we try this? And, and we're all excited on. So I'm really fortunate that one of the coaching cycles that came through was a group of teachers that wanted to improve their independent reading time within their classroom. And so I said, okay, sure, whatever, and that came down. How, what we came out of that was using the reading units of study and we piloted that into that classroom. So that's what we've been doing. And we finished unit one and now those teachers are taking on and doing unit two. And that'll be informational and that ties with information writing, which is like right now, they're doing. And what you're gonna see if you go in the classroom, oh, I wish you would go in this classroom. When we're done, I'm gonna tell you which classroom. Because you're gonna see kids and teachers engaged, excited. Oh gosh, it's amazing. So here's a little testimonial I was allowed to share with you from one of my teachers, okay? So here's what it says. "Trisha has helped us to set up our independent reading time in our classroom using Lucy Culkin's reading units of study. Now our students spend more time reading on their own and the number of books that they have read cover to cover is amazing. Together, we are helping our students create good reading habits and improve their reading achievement, but most importantly, they love reading again." And that alone just is amazing, so. I'm very, we're very proud of the work and what we see daily that you guys don't, don't always get to see. So I have. I have more, but that's all I was allowed."
And the last of the three amigos here. So I'm going to speak to our target-based grading system that we are implementing at the middle school right now and working with our teachers at the high school. First of all, I just want to say that, and I know Steve is here and Jenny's here, I couldn't be more proud to be a part, and you too as well, of our work at, at the middle school. Our teachers have accepted this challenge and let me tell you, the high school is just starting with this and it is a challenging process. However, the clarity that, that is coming out of this is amazing. Not only for the teachers, but for the students as well. And so part of the coaching cycles that I've been working on since we started have centered around target-based assessment. I have some individual, plus we have some teams that we're working with. And we've also been a part of the conversations here at the high school with Garth and Eric and just being, just sitting and just being that little fly on the wall and just listening to their conversations. We should all be just so proud of the teachers that we have here. I just, I can't say enough. So one of the things that in just 14 weeks that, that we are seeing in the classroom, teachers, the rich conversations that they're having. Sometimes those rich conversations might lead to some frustrations at times. It might, but they're crucial conversations that need to take place and they're constructive and our student's achievement is impacted from that. They're working on prioritizing their standards. They're creating their targets. They're aligning their units of study, their assessments, their reassessments. And they're, the biggest thing I think that is happening is the, across, the content, but across content conversations that haven't always happened. I know just during the amount of time that I've been here, and I've kind of been here a while, I just, I don't remember this level of conversation and collaboration, not only with our teachers, but how it's bringing clarity to our students and impacting their learning. So I did ask a couple of students as well for some testimonials and some of them said that they're starting to see that they actually have control of their learning. They talk about the learning journey they're on and, and they know what it is they need to know and where they're headed. They like having the conversations with their teachers and, and with their peers about what success looks like. And so I think that's opening up a lot of positivity in our classrooms. And one girl told me, I'm really starting to truly understand what proficient means. And she was 10. So kudos to the work that our district is doing. And we can't wait till, till we're K-12 with this.
High schools.
I mean, I just, all of it works. So what we hope is that this shift in mindset with our teachers and our students will just continually open new doors to learn. So we're just really proud for our role of being able to just work with our teachers. They're a work in the work.
Yep.
They are a work in the work.
Yeah, they are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
End of it?
Questions?
Questions?
Yes.
I got a question.
Okay.
Did you wanna go first?
Mine's sort of the two per, per.
That's okay.
Okay. Well, the first is, could you please just define what, and I hope this is easy and quick, target-based assessments?
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
Target-based assessment. Was this...
So with the target-based grading, we started out with taking the standards that we're working with, prioritizing them, and then you deconstruct them into learning targets that we, that...
That they'll report out.
That, that we, that the teachers report out on, report out against. So that means that there are very specific targets that teachers are aligning their units of study to. And so their assessments are what we call target-aligned.
And that's the work. They gotta do all that, align everything to those targets. It's a lot of work. And then to assess and then to reassess and allow us to take a test and re-take that test.
And what it's doing is it's just really, it's, it's creating that viable curriculum. And it's creating that clarity of what we want all students to know and be able to do.
Trisha, maybe, maybe it'd be easier if you could just give us an example. Give us an example.
What I was gonna say to you, I, I was just gonna quick add to that though, too, is that the targets are, to me, and I'm, I'm a little less experienced with this, but to me, it's like taking a standard that has a lot of wordiness, a lot of, I don't know, word, big vocabulary that's kind of like, when you read it, you're just like, really, what does that mean?
What does that really mean?
And it's really breaking that down into, first of all, manageable pieces, but second of all, language that teachers can relate to a little bit better. And then with the goal of having our students be able to understand exactly what they need to do to be successful.
So the learning target on a board for the day, whatever that learning target is, if I'm the kid, I know what I'm supposed to learn today and I know what's gonna be done. And then the teacher knows, I know, and we all, and then we have, well, what does that look like if you're successful then? It's, it's making your teaching become very clear, very specific, and where are we going?
I would imagine that's really one hope for any parents who would come in and say, what is my student gonna be learning this year?
Yes.
And can you give me a sense of what's...
And that's that whole like a three-year plan and things you're developing, where are we going with this out of the district? But, right, each building's at a different spot with it. You see, middle school's at one spot, high school's doing a little bit different. But it takes a long time to do this. This is a process, this is a lengthy thing. It's a lot of hard work, too.
Yeah.
And Mr. Fear, I do have, I do have some examples that I can share after.
Okay.
That I'd be happy to share.
Okay. So, well, the question that I have... So, well, the question that I have for all of you, you've given us, well, first of all, Mark gave us a pretty good snapshot of like our report card from the past and where we are at the present. And you've kind of given us some, a, a, a pretty good idea of where we are in, in terms of your areas. But we all know that we would like to have a report card of 100%. So we're, we're at 78, we're at 80. So where are we going, or where do we need to go to get that other 20%?
I don't know what you're, I think it's impossible, honestly, to score 100%.
Well, I do too. But I mean, what, where, what can we do as a board to improve what we're doing?
If I may, just for, I'm just going to jump in here, I think. You can, you can identify a number that, that is part of that continuum that the state has put out there. But, but really what we're talking about is, we want all students, all of the students in this district to perform at their maximum potential.
Right.
And if we can, if we can accomplish that, then, then we have moved heaven and earth.
Sure.
And so what I, what, 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 what we need in order to be able to get there, I believe, Pat, and I'll certainly ask for these folks to jump in, is to continue the good work that is, that is already happening, and that is, that is the work that those ladies are doing, and that our teachers are.
Well, that target, they're just raising.
And that's, that's that early release time on Wednesday. It's, it's the high-quality professional development that comes in the form of the institute. It's raising the capacity of, of all of our educators, which is going to translate to higher student achievement. But I.
No, and that's, well, you said, you're going to say it better than I'm going to say, but it's all those things and pieces that you're putting in place, but they take time to really see the effects of that. You know, we're just starting ground in many of them. So over time, especially that target-based grading.
So here's a quick, just a quick example, and is this the, this is from just the DPI, right?
Social studies.
Social studies. So the, the standard is, Wisconsin students will investigate and interpret interactions between individuals and groups. It's a sociology standard. Well, then the breakdown, it breaks it down into each little thing. So that, to me, is very.
Broad.
Broad, yeah. So then, one of the little areas is relationships of people and groups. And then the way it's set up is in grade bands. So, and then, so each of the, the learning targets is going to sound more like an action, something that we will be, that, that the students will be doing to show, to achieve proficiency. So like, for example, yeah, in the younger kid, the K-one grade band, describe how groups of people are alike and different. And then at a higher level, grade, I think that's grade three, five, compare how people from different cultures solve common problems, such as distribution of food shelters. So you see how it goes a little bit, a little bit more difficult. And then at the high school level, yeah, progresses at each grade band. And then at the high school level, investigate how language and culture can unify a group of people. Evaluate. So you can hear those action words that get a little bit more and more at a higher level as each, and so that's the goal, is to make it more user-friendly, basically, you know, especially the students. That's the end goal.
The other way to think about it is just the sheer number of standards that are expected of students. And I think one study talked about the Common Core English Standards. If you really taught and assessed every standard, it'd need like over 400 days every year. It's not a reality, right?
Right.
And so I, I think the, the work that our teachers are doing requires them to be more familiar with their standards, and then having to choose which standards do we think are the highest priority for our students. And, and reach agreements on that. So Mr. Hayek and I are both biology teachers. We A have to know what those standards are, that our students are going to be able to handle to, then we've got to decipher, which ones can we realistically teach in that timeframe that we have students? How are they going to be assessed? Maybe on the ACT? We want to make sure, I mean, we know the formula of the ACT, or the vagueness that the ACT gives us, there's going to be so many questions on sciences, how much time do you have here, the subcategories and that stuff. We've got to make sure we're in alignment with that sort of stuff as well. What resources do we have to support that learning? So really, but it takes a lot of time. I, I mean, again, that sounds kind of simple, but it takes a lot of time, because there's not just two teachers that teach the same content area. So if you imagine the world of, again, Algebra I, or seventh-grade math, or social studies, you know, it takes time to have those conversations. And I really don't think, as Tricia didn't express before, that as a district, we've asked our teachers to spend time to get to know their standards to that level. I mean, putting them in, build your own curriculum was one thing, whether it's dropdowns and everything else, sure. But, but here, there's a document that talks about what's the, the enduring understanding that students are going to have to have with that sort of standard. What leverage does that standard have, not only within your content area, but outside of your content area? So there's some processes that we're asking teachers to take all the standards through. So it's not just a hit-or-miss type game, but really some processes that they have to reach and have agreements on. And they've got to know their standard. We may have a disagreement on what does that verb mean, evaluate, or analyze, or what are they really trying to get at with the word culture and behavioral sciences within the social studies realm? And so you've really got to spend time with getting to that. Because from there, then they've got to break it down into what is it manageable for those students to know and be able to do out of that timeframe? The next step of this journey is talking about how do we know our students have achieved that? We have to be able to create those common assessments that have pieces that they're going to be seeing on those state assessments, like the forward exam, or VACT, for example. Then after that, the next plan, that vision, how do we best do that? We've decided on what the curriculum is, we've created those assessments, now we've got to review the data to say, hey, your kids are doing better on that part of the task than my kids are. What are you doing differently than me? Right? Use that art of teaching, that instructional practice? It all works. Some of it just works better than others, practices. So, but we can't really begin to have those conversations unless first we agree, what is it that we want all kids to know and be able to do? And second of all, how are we going to measure that they've done that? Then you can start having those conversations over, now you're talking apples to apples. Right now, it's kind of with the best of intentions, pockets of collaboration, or pockets of non-collaboration, because they haven't had the time, or it hasn't been on the emphasis. So, I mean, part of this early release Wednesday, a large part of this, the major focus this year, is what is it that we want all kids to know and be able to do? So that in the future, we can talk about how are we going to assess to make sure that our students have learned it? And so again, projecting the next year out after that, now that we have that data, we can continue to refine things, and then we can talk about what are we doing to best meet our students' needs.
And then to me, that translates to no matter whose classroom.
That was the next.
You're in. If you're whoever's, if you're in a third, if you have a third-grade student, it doesn't matter what you're, whose classroom you're in, you are guar, that student is guaranteed to be exposed to and learn and work towards proficiency in, you know, in the same areas. It doesn't matter whose biology room you end up in, you know.
Because we pick the same standard. We all are agreeing on this is what we're going to do.
The, the other part.
It won't be the educational lottery anymore.
Right.
No, that's, yeah. I mean, I think our parents relate to that probably.
And the other part of it is from our, from our students and parents' standpoint too, with improving that coherence and clarity, he, you know, we've got to reach agreement on extra credit? Not extra credit, half points, full points. How do we assess those things? How are we reporting out? What's the frequency then? Right now, it, it is very teacher-dependent, which is always going to be a certain level of teacher-dependency. But when the student is getting the transcript from the school district to OPACA, it doesn't say any teacher's name behind any courses. It's just, here's your grade in English nine. So it really shouldn't be teacher-dependent, it should be curricular, school-wide dependent. So that's what we're trying to work out, is improve those consistencies.
So I have probably too many questions to get through today. So I guess, two things. One, if I wanted to observe some of these discussions, especially about cross-content, across-content, who would I contact to find out what's going to do that? Or what would be the best?
So I have a PLT schedule, a spreadsheet, that lays out like each Wednesday what our topics are going to be. So you could reach out to me, and I could let you know what dates we're going to be meeting at the middle school, whether we are meeting in a grade-level team, and that's where, I, I'm just going to quickly share, you know, one of the things that came out of the PLT, my related arts staff, because they're kind of singletons in their own area, and we meet vertically, they're, they're their own department, so they decided to meet together, they decided that they were going to share their opening routines. So they shared, they, they walked into each other's classrooms as students, they pretended, the teachers stood up front, shared the learning target for the day, the success criteria for the day, and how they were going to start their class. And then they shared how they would wrap up and end their class, and then they moved to the next teacher's room, and they presented. So even though, you know, they couldn't meet as a grade-level team or vertically, they found a way to take that time and really learn and grow from each other. But I have that schedule, I would gladly share it. We meet sometimes within the grade levels, sometimes we meet vertically, which would mean fifth through eighth math are all meeting, fifth through eighth science. So we try to vary it up to meet the needs of what we're seeing and hearing in the building for, you know, their next steps.
Okay, thank you. We'll do that. The other, the other question I have is, given that teachers are now getting to have discussions across content areas, how are we making opportunities like that available to students? Does that happen too? Or is that another?
It happens a little bit already. We just recently talked an awful lot about, at least in sixth grade, I don't know about other areas, about using the transitions from the Lucy Culkin's writing that they were just talking about a little bit ago. And so we have posters now of those transition words in our classes. And so we get a chance then to talk about using those same things with the students. Like, they don't necessarily yet talk to each other about it, because they're not quite there in sixth grade, but we can talk to them about the fact that we know in English we're using these words, so we should also be using them when we're writing our math, you know, whatever the answer is at the time. If it dict, or if it necessitates some sort of transition, don't just go first, second, third.
Right.
Like, you have like 400 words here, choose one, you know?
Better, better words.
Right, better words. So we have, we have a chance to talk to the kids about how they relate to each other. At sixth grade, like I said, they're not quite there, they don't do it on their own quite yet, but I assume they'll get there.
I would, kind of piggybacking off of what Steve said, as part of the process for moving towards a target-based grading, assessing, recording system, if you're going to get to a point where you're going to write a target-based assessment, you need to, you as a teacher, need to know what proficient looks like. And so one of the ladies shared that, you know, students are now starting to, to know what proficient looks like. That comes out of our teachers having side-by-side conversations with each other, determining that success criteria, so that then they can take that back into their classroom and talk to the students about, this is what it's going to take for you to show proficiency. These are the things that you need to be able to do. And so I would encourage you to start, you know, it's been put out there, they've been given time, but the middle school teachers are all on board with having their learning targets out every day, as well as that success criteria. Our goal is to get to a point where you could walk into any classroom and ask any student, what are you learning today, and how are, how do you know you're going to be successful? And we'll get there. It will just take time for everyone to feel comfortable with it. The teachers really, they want to do what's right by their, by their students, and so they want to know it so well that, before they ever share it with the students, that I think sometimes they, they forget that it's okay to just put it out there and learn with them. But we're getting there.
But I think we've made huge accomplishments in the fact that if we looked at how many weeks we got to then in school, you know, wow. I just, it's the.
There's a lot going on.
Right. Transformation already with the students and taking ownership of those targets and knowing, and speaking that language and knowing where they're at in their journey, it just, and we're only 14 weeks in, right? 14, 15 weeks in? I mean, that's unbelievable.
Thank you very much for what you're doing. Thank you for sharing with us, and also thank you for the enthusiasm with which you're doing both of those.
Oh, but yes, see, we're the lucky ones. We really get to see a lot of great stuff that you don't always get to see, you know?
They do great work.
Well, if I curiously threw you. Any other questions?
Today, when I was at the middle school, when I had a conversation with Tobi, I could just tell her excitement.
Oh, the writing?
She was so frank. She said, this is a lot of work. She said, it is so much work. And the pre-assessments and the final assessments, and she used that terminology, norming, and everybody getting on the same page. But she said, I'm so excited because I have students that came into my class that had it last year. So I already see the difference in incoming students with my students last year. She said, I can't wait to see what this is going to look like. You know, when we actually have our first class of, they started in, you know, grade one or K or whatever, and go all the way through. She said, it's just so exciting to see.
See, and that's the excitement we see, because it's, it's a K eight, that writing. They're only in year two. And they haven't even fully gone through all the units one time yet. So, and the beauty, like, that's what we get to see, because we sit on the norming meetings, whereas where we score the papers, we see the paper, the pre, the post, and everything, and we have rich conversations around it. So we see it because the teachers talk, we talk a lot with them, and they'll be like, oh my gosh, did you see that? Oh my god, look at this, and look at that. So we see it a lot, is we get to have that conversation, and to only have done year two, and we're only slightly into second one. Yeah, the beauty of the papers. Even now, I'll give you an example, seventh grade, I just sat the other day, and the teacher was so excited. She's, she's so excited, I was like, did she see some of the papers? I got, she does have some top kids, that's not the point. She's just like, oh, you should see this. And I was like, oh my. You know, so it's just.
That's what we get to see. We could make lots of suggestions of, like, specific classrooms and, and places we could, you know, we'd ask, you know, to have you visit, that you would just be able to hear and see some of that same stuff from, from the teachers, because there's a lot of it going on. Yeah. Okay, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, that moves us on to the consent agenda.
I'd move a group of consent agenda.
Second. To approve, and a second, any discussion? Roll call.
Hattner?
Aye.
See Hattner?
Aye.
Or Bolitsky?
Aye.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Sandy Mannion?
Yes.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Jim Johnson?
Yes. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I'd move adjournment in the close session under section 19.8, parent, .85, parent one, parent D of the state statutes to review the written evaluations of school safety files.
There is a motion, is there a second?
Please.
Motion and second to return in the close session under section 19.5, parent one, parent D of the state statutes to review the written evaluations of school safety. Roll call.
Dimitri Martin?
Aye.
Betty Mannion?
Yes.
Sandy Robinson?
Yes.
Or Bolitsky?
Aye.
See Hattner?
Aye.
Hattner?
Yes. Okay, with that, we will give just a few moments for the camera to break down, and then we will, a little second.